This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:31 PM on Tuesday, May 6, 2025 in Room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Anne Kramer. Ms. Kramer, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow?
Here.
Treasurer Cook?
Here.
Director Swobin?
Here.
Chair Meaden?
Here.
Director Whitehorn?
Here.
Vice Chair Winkman?
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at RochesterSchools.org/simply. We have no comments to the Board this evening, so we'll move on to item 4.1, Information and Outreach, Non-Continuation of Federal Grant Award. This is an information item. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. I don't often read at Board meetings, but I do want to share a message that went out to our internal and external community this morning that I wrote last night based on a recent development. I'd like to do so so that it is a matter of record for this Board and this district. On April 29, 2025, Rochester Public Schools received a letter from Mr. Murray Basset in the Office of Planning, Evaluation, and Policy Development at the U.S. Department of Education informing Rochester Public Schools that a federal grant to prepare and license staff to provide mental health services to Rochester Public School students had been terminated effective December 31, 2025. The letter informed us that funding for the school-based Mental Health Scholars Project is being discontinued in the middle of a multi-year grant period, leaving the objectives of the project incomplete and the majority of the people who are participating in the project without the licenses and degrees that the federal grant was awarded to help them earn. The termination of this grant is a big step backward. Thousands of students who might have received counseling and support to address challenges to their mental health such as depression, anxiety, and thoughts of suicide will not receive that support unless the U.S. Department of Education reconsider's its termination of this vitally important initiative. The $1.9 million federal grant to RPS was designed to address the profound mental health crisis that is affecting students in every community and from every background across the United States today. Toward that end, the federal funds are helping to fill a gap that Rochester Public Schools cannot fill on its own, enabling talented people who are already working in our school system to earn the licenses and degrees they need to provide students with counseling and other forms of mental health support in our schools. The federal grant covers tuition in the social work program at Winona State University, substitute pay for staff while they take classes to earn their degrees, and mentoring and supervision to support these emerging mental health practitioners as they learn their craft. Importantly, while the grant helps people earn their licenses and degrees, it does not guarantee them a job in Rochester Public Schools. Rather, it only guarantees them an interview for a job. They must then earn that job like any other candidate who applies. The federal grant to Rochester Public Schools includes an appropriate and common sense emphasis on helping people of color and people who are indigenous earn the degrees they need to provide mental health services in our schools. Two-thirds of the participants in the project to date are from those backgrounds, while one-third are white. As such, while the grant seeks to increase the number of mental health professionals in our school system who are underrepresented when compared to the demographic composition of the student body we serve, it does not exclude people from other backgrounds and life experiences from participating. This spring, six of the people who are participating in the program will earn their licenses and master's degrees and will be able to serve as social workers in our schools and as staff at mental health providers who work with schools in Rochester. We are thrilled at the accomplishment of those six people and thank them for the hard work they've done to reach this personal and professional milestone. However, helping those six people enter new careers to serve our students was supposed to be just the beginning of this project's accomplishments. Another 10 people are currently participating in the program, but if this grant is terminated, they will not be able to earn their licenses and degrees. Terminating the grant before these people finish the program is a strikingly inefficient and unproductive use of taxpayer dollars. Funds that have already been spent on tuition, stipends, and other expenses for those participants would be largely wasted because those people would not be able to complete the credentials they need to serve in our schools. And beyond the current participants in the program, 12 more people are supposed to begin participating in the project next year and are scheduled to complete the program during the final two years of the federal grant. If Rochester Public Schools is allowed to complete the work that the federal government funded through this grant, by the end of the project, we will have prepared more than two dozen talented and dedicated professionals to strengthen student mental health in Rochester and beyond. Rochester Public Schools plans to file a request for reconsideration of the termination of this grant, and I'm hopeful that staff at the U.S. Department of Education will recognize that it is in our nation's interest to pursue innovative strategies to strengthen the mental health of our young people. The termination of this grant has brought the decisions that are currently being made in Washington, D.C., close to home here in Rochester. Some of those decisions will impact larger numbers of people than will be impacted by the termination of the federal mental health grant to Rochester Public Schools. But if you have spent time, as I have, with students who are struggling with mental health, you know that the termination of this grant will be a lost opportunity to make a difference in the lives of students who desperately need additional support to thrive in school and in life. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Board members, does anybody have any comments? And I, as I understand it, we have 30 days to file a reconsideration, but we have no idea what the timeframe might be or response.
That's correct. We were told it was a one-and-a-half-page letter that informed us of this, and then we were told we'd be receiving further information from the finance arm of the Department of Education. We've basically received notice that more information may be forthcoming, but no other details at this time.
Director Barlow?
Was there a cause or reason included in that page and a half, a letter that we received?
It said that the grant reflected the priorities of the previous presidential administration and not the priorities of the current presidential administration, and so therefore it was being terminated to reflect that change in administrations. And I will say, Director Barlow, that having previously worked at the Department of Education in another administration, presidential administrations always change priorities. However, in my experience, this is the first time where they are literally cutting midstream funded program that was approved by both the U.S. Congress and the President in a previous administration before it is even complete. One would normally expect that they simply would change future priorities, but in this instance, they are stopping the program of the previous administration midstream. And they were quite explicit about that, so I'm not trying to be political in highlighting that. The letter explicitly said these were the priorities of the previous administration and not the current administration.
Director McLaughlin?
Superintendent, thank you for reading that and thank you for your comments. It's just really disappointing to see this with all the work that we put into our students' mental health, that it's a big step backwards, and I agree, it's a lost opportunity.
And speaking of the work that our mental health team has been doing, I went back and looked at the presentation from June and even the presentation the year before where they used the Minnesota Student Survey results to try to set the stage for why this work was so important. And a quarter to a third of Rochester Public, Rochester Public School students self-identify themselves as having long-term mental health, behavioral, or emotional problems, or having been treated for a mental health, emotional, or behavioral problem in the past year. So this does not serve a small subset of our students, and I agree, it is somewhat discouraging.
Director Mark?
Well, and just to, I think this is going to impact the budget discussion too, but that's for another time. But part of the real pain of this, of those kids, and there's a substantial number who are feeling stressed or anxious or depressed, this was the first line of help, of support. And so many of those kids, if they can get that help at school, if they have somebody who knows what they're doing, they can talk with, they may not need, you know, to get additional help, professional, additional professional help elsewhere. I mean, if we can handle it at the school, right when they feel the need, that is such a good investment, and this is just, it's heartbreaking.
Board members, thank you. I'm sure the superintendent will keep us updated. Moving on to 4.2, our recognitions. We have a number of groups to recognize tonight, and they all make big contributions to the education and well-being of our students, and we'll start with Director Cook.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. We are going to recognize National School Nurse Day, which is tomorrow, May 7, School Nurse Appreciation Day. Students have a right to have their physical and mental health needs safely met while in school setting, and students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school. We celebrate our RPS school nurses and their efforts to meet the needs of today's students by providing quality, student-centered care and promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our students. We are grateful for all they do to support students to stay healthy in school, safe, and ready to learn.
Director Barlow?
On Friday, May 9, it is National School Communicators' Day. You may have seen our RPS communications team at district events, at schools taking pictures and filming videos. They will usually have a camera in hand and a smile on their face as they chase after students and help out our staff. You have certainly seen the products of their work in website news and stories, creative posters and graphics, social media posts, and more. We appreciate their commitment to share our RPS stories transparently, honestly, and effectively. Thank you for your work.
Director Workman?
This week, May 5 through 9, is National Teacher Appreciation Week, and of course, we appreciate our teachers every day that they are in the classroom. But we can't express enough gratitude for the critical role teachers play in driving the success of our students. They are the ones who teach the necessary knowledge and skills for success, but they also inspire and guide our students to become future leaders, innovators, and problem solvers. During this year's Teacher Appreciation Week, let's all of us find a way to show our support for our RPS educators and tell them how much their commitment and dedication to our children is so appreciated.
Director McLaughlin?
Going based on our agenda here, National Child Care Provider Day is May 19. As you heard at our April 8 meeting, school-age childcare, known as SAC, is just as crucial for our students as it is for our families. Our SAC staff provide a safe space for kids to read, play games, interact with other kids their own age, and go on field trips. SAC is an essential resource for families and is beneficial in every aspect. We are grateful for all the people in our SAC program that make it all happen and for SAC's leadership continuing efforts to expand and improve the program.
Director Mark?
May 1 was May Day, and more importantly, National School Principal's Day. Our principals are instructional leaders and community builders, and they're integral to the growth and education of our students and staff. They are showing their mettle, especially this year, in the implementation of the school's continuous improvement plans and balanced budget model. We are really thankful for all of our principals and the commitment they demonstrate every day.
Director Whitehorn?
And in alignment with our agenda, we are also recognizing National Lunch Hero Day, which is, was on May 2. Not all heroes wear capes. Sometimes they wear hairnets and plastic gloves. The 2nd of May was our School Lunch Hero Day. Our school nutrition professionals prepare healthy meals for our students that power up our students for learning, all while adhering to the strict nutritional standards and navigating food allergies and sharing smiles and laughs with our students. Our lunch ladies and men are very important. School Lunch Hero Day is our chance to thank our school nutrition professionals for the difference that they make every day for a child who comes through our cafeteria.
Thank you, Board members. How about a round of applause for all of those greats? Our next information and outreach item is recognition of the Global Affairs Club. Superintendent Pecel?
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I want to invite the students and advisor, let's see, Chris Carter and Lindy Lang to come on up to take a seat at the table here. We want to see you. Come on up.
We'll get one more chair.
Of course, we can absolutely get one more chair.
Oh, you got it.
Just grab a seat there as wherever it fits. So we are attempting to recognize some type of student accomplishment at every board meeting, and we actually had a series of things just happen this spring that have allowed us to really populate the agenda this year, and this is one that I will say, as somebody who was a global studies teacher and who used to be on the board of the organization that sponsored this, I was so excited to see Rochester doing so well in this competition. So we are eager to hear about what you did, why you did it, and super proud of this accomplishment that you had. So thank you again.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Pecel and Rochester Public School Board for having us here today. We're very excited to share a little bit about our experiences. My name's Chris Carter. I'm a social studies teacher at Mayo, and this is my first year being the advisor for the Global Affairs Club. Broadly, Global Affairs Club is, we try to provide a place for students to discuss politics, current events. We're kind of an after-school sort of club that also has a competitive arm, if you will, which is the Academic World Quest. Academic World Quest is a competition in world knowledge, current events, and students study, I mean, in some cases, hundreds of hours to learn everything possible that they can from the curriculum that we get that these questions might be about. We had 16 students from Mayo compete this year up in St. Paul, and actually, Mayo High School finished first, fourth, sixth, and eighth, I believe, out of the about 35 teams that competed. And we're looking at three-quarters of our state champion team here. So let me introduce the students. We've got Hannah Tupper, one of our captains here this year, Emma Lang, who's mother Lindy, also a school district employee, and father also went along on the trip, and Avita Hanson. We are missing Adeline Crum tonight, unfortunately. But I just have to say that, before I turn it over to everybody else, we had a lot of wonderful financial support to make this happen from the Mayo High School Booster Club, who graciously funded our bus to get up to St. Paul, and Global Minnesota, that other than, well, these students had to pay essentially zero dollars out of pocket for the entirety of the experience. So huge thanks to the Booster Club and to Global Minnesota for supporting such a wonderful organization. So I'll pass it on to the team if there's any points you'd like to address.
Yeah, I feel like we were very lucky. We competed at state, like Mr. Carter said, and there were a bunch of articles on different topics. So we had things about critical minerals in Africa, foreign languages in the United States, like AI and the future of NATO, and I think we just have such a privilege to be able to learn these things, and I don't know, we did pretty good at state. We got fifth, which was really...
At Nationals.
At Nationals, we got fifth, which was really good. And also, Nationals, we just got a lot of opportunities. We got to see the UAE Embassy, which was really cool, and got to speak to a Mexican ambassador, and it was a really good team-building opportunity and just kind of, I don't know, I think it sparked a lot of our interests to kind of go into a field like that when we're older, major in something like International Affairs or a foreign language or something like that. Yeah.
I agree. I think as someone who's planning on majoring in international studies in college, it was really enlightening to be able to meet a lot of people in these fields, talk to them on what their experiences are, and see a lot about what this looks like up close. It was very, we were very privileged to see this. Now a lot of people get to say they've seen the UAE Embassy and spoken to some of those people, so that was definitely a great privilege. And we're very thankful to Global Minnesota, like Mr. Carter said, for funding this because it wouldn't have been possible without them.
We're also the only team, like we're only the only school in Rochester that has a team go to this competition, like Sentry Jam, they don't have a team, so it's even more of like a great opportunity because we do have a team that can take us. And like Avita was saying, we, at least Avita and I, we were both going into like STEM majors, and then we started kind of like really focusing on this club, and it just kind of changed like everything. I don't know. I realize how much I don't really like chemistry.
Better to find out now.
Right, yeah. But I don't know. It really showed how much we all trust each other as well because we were able to like hold each other accountable for studying for all these things, and we all knew how much we wanted it, like, and how much we all wanted to do well in it. So it was a really good experience to be able to go with like my four, or my three best friends on this trip as well.
So congratulations. What was, what was one of your hardest questions that you had?
Avita and I had this topic. It's on a non-traditional approach to foreign policy, and a lot of the questions we got asked at Nationals were very complex compared to what we were reading because we knew so much about the topic, but it was probably one of our worst topics at Nationals because of the way they like worded the questions. And Avita had this one question in like space and national security where it was, it had like two different countries, and one of them was like...
It was definitely a tongue twister. They gave us 50 seconds per question to be able to deliver an answer, and all four of the options were long, and it was definitely maybe the hardest part wasn't necessarily the information, but just figuring out what the question was even asking. So I think that was definitely tricky. It was more of a speed game than anything, and I mean, trying to pick a question or two out of 100 questions that we competed in, to pick the hardest is definitely really difficult because, I mean, I got home and my mom told me that those were some of the hardest things she's ever seen, and the fact that we got 74 of those right was very impressive. So I think if anything, we're just so proud of how we did.
Fantastic.
And what would you say to any student who might hear about your success and be interested in taking this on? What's the, what are your words of wisdom?
I would say, study hard, especially for state, because I do think if you study for state, then you do have a good chance of going to Nationals if you put in the work, and also find a team that you like the people, because if you don't like the people, you won't be motivated. You want to find people who will hold you accountable and who will just make you want to win the thing, so.
Board members? Director Cook?
Can you tell me some more about the curriculum? Like, what's the reading list like? Or maybe, what would you suggest that somebody who's interested in foreign affairs and in the world put in their reading list?
So for the topics, they sent out a study guide to us that we got access to, and it had, there were 10 topics. One of them was current events, and one of them was this one called Great Decisions, which was like a sponsored topic, so it's in this book full of different articles that you read, and they're, they usually focus just on two of them. So they were, there was AI, national security, and then there was NATO, correct? Yes. So those were the kind of two focused ones in Great Decisions. And then aside from those two, there's other topics, like, one of them was a focus, they have a focus country every year, and this year it was Mexico, and then there's, they just focus on so many different topics, and underneath, there's like round descriptions, round sources. They give you like 10 articles or more for each topic, and so you just kind of study through them, read them. We, we like quizzed ourselves on all of them so we could like kind of imagine questions that could be asked. So it's not like you have to go digging for information. They give it all to you, so as long as you study it, then you can be really successful in it.
Director Barlow?
And a question for the staff. How was it that Mayo happened to either stumble upon this or develop an awareness as to the existence of this particular Academic World Quest? And are, you noted that JAM and Sentry currently are not providing that. We sometimes talk about how while all RPS schools offer great options, the thing we strive to also accomplish is to ensure that students in all of our schools are, if you will, having submitted access to successful programs such as this, and so I was just kind of curious as to how it came into existence.
Sure. So as a, as a club, I know that Global Affairs has been around for at least a decade at Mayo, potentially longer than that. So, and we had the longtime advisor, recently retired, Chris Schmitz, who was, he was leading that for many years. And the extent to which it, its origins at Mayo, I guess, to me, remain a mystery. Oftentimes, student clubs are created by students. I've, I typically have students propose maybe one or two clubs to me every year to advise. And, well, anyway, last year with Mr. Schmitz retiring, this was one that I was definitely going to take on. But, you know, this isn't something which is currently standardized across RPS, you know, student clubs. There is some similarity in clubs that are out there throughout the, throughout the system, but, you know, it's, it's based on either student interest or staff interest. So I will say that with my experience with this this year, I would be very much an advocate for expanding that program to the other high schools. So, so long as there's a staff member that's willing to take it on and a student, a group of students that are interested in participation, so, which I would imagine that there would be at all three high schools. So, you know, it's just a matter of kind of finding, finding the time and place for it in the school, so.
Thank you.
Director Workman?
Was there a limit to the number of students on each team, like a minimum and a maximum?
Yeah, well, so in the just Global Affairs Club that would debate current events and all of that, there was no limit. all of that, there was no limit with regards to that. So for the Academic World Quest component, which was all the competition side of things, this year, fortunately, they doubled the amount that we could bring. So we brought sixteen students, four teams of four from Mayo, and previously it was two per school, so you could bring eight students in the past. So, yes, we were able to double that this year, which was wonderful.
Director McLaughlin.
Just to follow up on those other questions, how, how many times has a Mayo team competed in the Academic World Quest? Is that new this year or other years?
No. So I guess I don't know how many times that we have competed, but this is the third time that we have made Nationals.
Excellent.
Hey, a quick one for the students. Don't overthink it. Who's your favorite world leader?
Fifty seconds.
Current, alive? I'll give you a history too, if the current is a little too high. Okay, good, thank you. Excellent variation there.
We're very on the spot here, but Emma and I shared the topic for the future of NATO and our Great Decisions, and they talked very extensively about James Stoltenberg, so I'll give him some credit right here.
Okay, that's good.
Hannah, do you want to? No, yeah. I'm not sure. I think...
There's just so many for Emma to think of.
Yeah, there's so many, and it's so nuanced, because I think most world leaders have done something wrong in their lives, but...
That's good to understand as well.
I don't know, we, me and Hannah, well, it's kind of a world leader, but we did global, like in Africa, like critical minerals, and there was a lady, Petronia Voweka, and she was like an advocate against like the M23 that's going, like the, in Rwanda. So I hope that was really cool.
That's great.
I can't say that I know that much about world leaders. I don't know. I'm going to just say like, Abraham Lincoln.
I like that.
Go away back. That's good.
I, I, I will just say, to my son's eternal gratitude, my wife refused to let me name him Winston. It would have been Winston Churchill for me. He's Adam instead, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Our next item is board member updates. Does any board member have updates, either from committees, or visits, or others that they'd like to share? Director Marvin.
A number of us were able to attend the Rochester Public Schools Powwow held last Saturday. And the focus of that is the graduating seniors who are indigenous. They receive an eagle feather and a beautiful handmade quilt made just for them. And then it's, it's a celebration. There's food, and there's music, and there's dancing, and vendors, and it was a wonderful occasion. And I guess the thing that I was the most gratified about is when they had many of the native people doing traditional dances, they invited everybody to join them. And three-year-olds and eighty-three-year-olds were on the gym floor doing the dances right along with them. It was just a wonderful community, community celebration.
Director Workman.
So I had the opportunity to attend, certainly not as an orchestra director, but as a member of the audience, the Big Nine Ninety-First Annual Music Festival that was held at Mayo High School this past Friday. And I've been thinking about this ever since the Mayo High School orchestra performed about what deeper learning looks like. And their teacher was on maternity leave. She'd had a baby ten days before the Big Nine Music Festival, so she was not going to be able to be there to conduct. Mayo High School performed five different selections with five different student conductors, and they were all amazing. They'd been really well-prepared, and the cohesiveness of that group was incredible. They were all working for the same thing, they were on the same team. But the highlight has to be the last one who conducted. He conducted a piece called "The Tinker's Toy Box," and it was a piece that he had composed, and it was absolutely fabulous. I spoke with him for a couple minutes afterwards, and I said, "Please tell me that you are considering, you know, pursuing music as a career." And he got this big grin on his face, and he said, "Oh, absolutely." Just remarkable young people that I was able to hear throughout the course of the part of the day that I was there. Thirteen schools are in the Big Nine Conference now. Twelve of them have band, orchestra, and choir, and those students performed for each other during the course of the school day, which is when I heard Mayo High School and a few others. The one school that doesn't have an orchestra program is Red Wing. And their program was cut about twenty years ago because of, for budget reasons. It's never come back. They sold all their instruments, they don't have a program anymore. So I think it's really important to encourage and support of the community for our music and arts programs. I think they're very valuable for lots of deeper learning for kids and for a way for them to express their, their own creativity and their own emotions, and learn how to work together as a team. So big bravo to all the students who participated this last Friday. Mayo High School did not have school that day because there were like two thousand students coming in, so the, the other students had the day off. So a number of us, do you want to talk about Century?
No, go ahead. I have something else.
Go ahead first.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to share something from the Rochester Public School Foundation. Because it is teacher appreciation work, Teacher Appreciation Week now in the first week of May, wanted to note for the community, I guess, that Rochester Public School Foundation continues to offer honor a staff member fundraising option for itself. It's a great way to honor a teacher in RPS by making a contribution to the Public School Foundation, which will then go on to fund innovative projects in the district, and also provide some recognition for a staff member or teacher that you'd like to honor in that way. So, that's all.
Well, a number of us participated in a skip, one of our monthly skip visits to Century High School, and their skip priorities involve deeper learning and MTSS and restorative practices. And we're going to be able to show a video in a minute that I think really, well, we met one of the young ladies who's in the video, and we were able to see the deeper learning in action. You'll get to see it in the video. But what I was struck by was the really intense focus on improving instruction and recognizing, one of the comments that the principal made is, forty-five-minute lectures don't work for twenty-twenty-five students. And teachers are really looking to figure out how to deliver this complex instruction in ways that the students can benefit from. And one of the ways they're doing it very well is with deeper learning. So let's watch the video. Let's hope it works.
Yeah, we'll see.
Looks like the little speaker icon is muted in the bottom right.
Here at Century, our staff remember how to provide deeper learning experiences by stepping up to the mic. Our staff create lessons where students can master content, find their identity in lessons, and engage their creative juices.
One of the main challenges in teaching today seems to be engagement, and identity and creativity are powerful hooks. They pull kids into meaningful interaction with content and help move them closer to mastery. In working with the DL team this year, I have become a believer. I've seen that a purposeful blend of identity, creativity, and mastery results in richer, more authentic, stickier, deeper learning. I wove DL principles into two ninth-grade units I piloted this year. In the first, students wrote memoirs based on two driving questions. What formative experiences shaped them into the people they are today? What are the puzzle pieces of their unique identities? On a totally different note, I am for the first time trying a podcast with my students. We are currently studying a serial production, "The Good Whale," and then students will produce their own podcasts. They'll stamp the work with their own identities by picking their own topics, and they will experiment with creativity in designing cover art for their podcast sites and deciding how best to share their ideas and their voices.
I'm in Ms. Kowalski's geometry class. And what I did for my project was a fashion sketch combining both segments, bisectors, and symmetry, translation, and reflection. I really did like this project simply because I was able to show my interest in fashion. I really enjoy fashion. It's something that I think is a big part of my identity.
In the symphonic band and symphonic wind courses, students participate in a small ensemble each year. They are responsible for selecting the members in their ensemble, as well as their music, giving them a chance to express their identity as musicians. In the creative process of rehearsing and making musical decisions, students prepare for a musical performance at the end of the semester. Throughout the unit, students develop their independent musicianship skills, as well as building skills that transfer to all types of learning and life experiences.
I wanted to make sure to come in with a special education lens to show that all students can achieve a richer, more meaningful understanding of subjects. I wanted to make sure that IUP goals can be connected to real-world applications where students no longer feel a stigma, but learn to think, collaborate, problem-solve that is impactful and meaningful. For example, the zoo project, students were able to show mastery of area and perimeter while adding their identity and creativity of what it takes to build a zoo.
So in Mr. Dolls and Mrs. Ryan's class, we've learned about the Great Gatsby. We did a one-pager on it, and I think I did good on the one-pager. I've learned a lot from the Great Gatsby. Like, it doesn't matter if you're rich or poor or in between.
What is something you remember learning this year that felt important or meaningful?
I think it would be the Gingerbread House, learning about area and perimeter.
Okay. When you were doing that project, did any part of your learning help you see yourself in a new way?
A little bit, yeah. I did learn how to make new friends, like my friend in this classroom.
Thank you, Anne, and thank you to the team at Century who put that video together. I also have to give a shout-out to the students in the TOPS program at Century who invited me to come and visit their TOPS room. In addition to all of this, you know, understanding of how best to learn in the classroom, we know that school climate is really important. And the TOPS rooms, not just at Century, but our other high school, are led by some amazing student leaders who have such empathy and understanding of their peers and are really trying to provide spaces and opportunities for their peers to have a place to go when they need support or understanding. And I just, they have it staffed every day, all day. And so the fact that they take time out of their own learning to help their peers, I think, is a real testament to what we can do and what we're doing to build good school climates in our schools. So thanks, thanks to that team for letting me come in. It was great. Any other visits, meetings? Director Whitehorn.
All right, y'all gonna have to bear with me just a minute today, so be patient with me. Talk to me nice, talk to me kind, give me a moment. So this week was a very emotional week for the community of color this week. We've had some highs and some lows. I would be remiss in not addressing some things in the position in which I currently sit. And I just want to, so I'm gonna start off with some good things. So on the second of May, RPS was, had the privilege of hosting Dr. Bernard Harris, who was the first black man to actually do a spacewalk. He also did all of his studying here at the School of Medicine here in Rochester, Minnesota. He studied arrow medicine. I might have said that wrong. I don't, I've, this first astronaut I ever met, so I might have got some stuff wrong. But it was very amazing. I did have the privilege of being able to see him speak to the students at both Gibbs and JM, where he spoke to them both for an hour. The kids had amazing questions. I really do think that it sparked something in some kids. I don't think that kids nowadays even think about being an astronaut anymore. So he gave a very informative speech, gave the kids some really wonderful information. The kids were really excited to have met him. He stayed for pictures. He wore his full astronaut suit, and he explained a lot of things. The younger kids, he wanted to know how they use the bathroom, and he explained it in detail. And now I know how astronauts use the bathroom. Was not on my bucket list, but I know now. In addition to that, to get right into it, we had a incident this week in our community. And I apologize for my lack of speech today, but I'm trying to keep my words together and not get emotional. So I did write things down, so bear with me. I just want everybody to know that I'm just not a board member here as no one here is. I'm a mother, I'm a community member, I'm an activist, I'm a trusted friend, I'm a confidant in this community. This week, our city unfortunately witnessed a very disturbing act that has been, has gone viral. A young black child who was no older than probably kindergarten was called out of his name, a very derogatory word, the N-word. Unfortunately, I've thought this over quite a bit, and there's really not a justification or an excuse for an adult at any point to speak to any child in that manner, despite of race, ability, creed, sex. It's, it's completely unacceptable. As a mother, as a grandmother, as an aunt, as a cousin, as a friend, I'm, I'm very much outraged. Unfortunately, since that incident, the person who did this has opened a crowdfunding source. And at the last time that I was able to stomach, to look at what was happening there, she had raised over eight hundred thousand dollars in support of that campaign. There is some very nasty, very inappropriate comments that even as an adult made me very uncomfortable to read. And I know that some of our children and some of the people of our community, some of our students have probably read some of these comments and seen some of these actions that have gone forth. I do feel a duty to speak out against this, to say that... When the safety and the humanity of our children is threatened, it could have been your child, it could have been your neighbor, it could have been a kid that you knew. And it is very disheartening to me that we live in a community where any person is... Excuse me. Could remain silent or complicit to this kind of action. could remain silent or complicit to this kind of action. There is a fear that people who do these things like to ignite in people, in people of color, in our allies, that make us so our children don't feel comfortable going to the playground or walking into their school building. And that should not be happening. Through the last couple of days, I've been asked over and over again, what can I do and how can I be a support? You can speak up. Silence is complicity. Silence is agreement. Silence is a choice. And I would hope that after today, people will take into thought what your silence is actually saying. It's not acceptable. It's not, it's not right. This is not an issue of what I think or what I feel, but as a community, there needs to be clear definitions of what is right and what is wrong. And this was wrong. This was absolutely wrong. When people say they want to be an ally, be an ally and speak up. Speak your truth. To cover for someone who is involved in these activities, it's wrong. It's absolutely wrong. There's not a parent or a person in this space that would be okay with anybody speak, any adult speaking to their child in that way. And there's a lot of parents that would be at arms right now. And I, and I speak to the board, I speak to the community right now. There's not a single person that cannot say that they do not love their own child enough that they, that this would not outrage them. But I just want to say this part, and I want to keep it as high-level as I can. For people who do not speak up, we're no different than the cowards that are hiding behind users' names and masks. You have to use your voice in these times. You have to be clear on where you stand at these times. If, I'm, I'm, I'm emotional about it because I, it disturbs me that we're still having this conversation. It bothers me that we spent my husband's fiftieth birthday yesterday protesting and rallying and standing in support of a cause that unfortunately we still have to stand for. And I would hope that this is a call to action for some people tonight. You can do more, and we should do more. I know that we have not, we don't know what grade or age this little boy is, but he's a member of our community. And he has friends and family that were affected in our community. And it does directly impact our school system and our community. So I, I just wanted to get that piece off my chest. And I just want everybody to understand their responsibility in using your voice in these matters. I want to also give a shout out to Griot Arts today, um, who allowed us to make signs in their arts center, uh, on yesterday. Um, and because of her just opening her doors for signs for a, for a protest and rally in support of a young man, she received death threats, her business was targeted. It was so unnecessary. It was very, very ugly. So I don't know if this is decorum or not, but please support that woman and her business as she really put all that she had on the line to support a cause and didn't get back a lot of love behind it. Um, I, I, I want to also say thank you to all of the supporters and all the allies that we have. I want to thank you very much for standing in this fight with those, with all of us. Also, um, for those people that are interested in being involved with this, there will be a town hall on tomorrow evening sponsored by the NAACP and Barbershop Talk, um, where we're having yet another discussion. And if you caught the sarcasm in it, that's fine, because we are having yet another discussion. But I would hope that this would ignite positive action in people. And you will, we will stop making this a us versus them and understand that this is a we problem. Discrimination is wrong. We all have our own free will, but some things are wrong. I'm not asking people to, to change their entire lifestyle, but we do need to speak up when things are not right. Um, and we can use the amplification of everybody's voices to see that there are charges brought. Um, because in all honesty, do we want people like that educating our children or with our kids? We have to say something. We have to say something. I hope everybody can stand and agree with you on that. And I'm sorry.
Thank you, Director Whitehorn.
Thank you.
I, I think it, it, we, we recognized a number of different, um, employee groups, and I, I think I want to thank all of our staff and our administrators who also wrapped themselves around our students this week in our schools, um, who might have been feeling the fear that Director Whitehorn spoke of and, um, I, speaking personally, I'm continuing to be committed to making sure that what we've set up, uh, in our schools is places of safety and belonging for all of our students, um, is one that I'll be continued to be committed to. And I, we have always said, we're trying to set the good foundation, but the work is not done. And we'll continue to do that going forward.
Oh, and I didn't mention that, uh, executive directors, Ms. Mona and Ms. Jackie, and I also thank you to, uh, Dr. Pecel, did also help with, well, they attended, but they also, every, it was a big, a lot of us that made this happen for, um, Dr. Harris to be able to be there as well. So a big hand, applause to all of you all for helping make it happen and getting on board with my shenanigans. Appreciate you.
That's great, thank you.
Right, our next agenda item are, is our consent agenda items five point one through five, six. Would any board member like any item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Move approval. Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Our next agenda item is a monitoring item, the fiscal year twenty-six budget development process update. This will provide information to support the board's consideration of the twenty-six, twenty-seven prep-for-action item at the June third meeting and our action item on the budget on June seventeenth. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I'd like to ask Andy Croxton, our Director of Finance, to come on up, and also John Carlson, our Chief Administrative Officer. Um, board members, we're gonna add a bit of a, a, a practice here to our presentations, even though Andy, who leads this work directly, will be doing the presentation. Uh, I said to members of the cabinet, you guys need to come down and sit there because then I don't have to call you over when, um, there's a question. But, uh, that'll be the case for other presentations as well, but I want to thank Andy for the leadership he's provided. I think the only, uh, point I'd like to make before Andy gives you an update on the development of the budget that you will approve, uh, about a month from now, um, is that I have never, uh, in thirty-plus years of being involved in school district leadership, uh, been at a moment where events at both the state and federal level were so uncertain. And so we are bringing you our best projection of where our budget is gonna be when we ask you to approve it, uh, in June of this year, as you are required by law to do and as you are all committed to do. Um, we are trying to stay as closely connected as we can to state-level discussions and federal discussions. Um, but I think there's a significant chance that, uh, in the dark of night, as they try and get a deal done at the legislature, we may find ourselves with a very different, uh, scenario, positive or negative, than the one we think we're having now. And for reasons we talked about earlier tonight, the federal level is anybody's guess. So we are navigating very, uh, uncertain, uh, times, uh, but with that, we want to give you an update on the work that we have done over the last six months since you, uh, passed your budget, uh, guidance for us, which we've used to the development of the process that Andy's gonna give you a, an overview of now.
Thank you, Dr. Pecel. Chair Nathan, members of the board, I'm glad to be back here again to give you a brief update on, uh, where we are to date, uh, with development of next year's budget. I want to, um, step backwards, though, and, uh, maybe not backwards, but I want to just remind everyone of, um, the balanced budget model that was presented and approved as the, basically the framework for how we went about developing the budget, specifically, um, focusing this first year on, uh, schools, um, the schools themselves and working directly with principals. Out of that work, and as we begun to dig into more of the, um, what was just what we referred to as district-wide services, which was essentially everything that supported the operation of those sites, it became clear that we, we needed to also create what, what I call a fifth pillar or a fifth category in this case called central office. That is going to be primarily those positions that are, uh, in most cases, leadership positions, so cabinet, for example, um, superintendent, of course, uh, managers, directors, generally those that are leading functions within the organization. But it also includes support staff in positions in human resources and finance that support the ongoing operation of the district, such as hiring, uh, individuals and, uh, paying those folks, uh, as we, as we do in the Employee Services Division of the Finance. So we created the central office, and in doing so, uh, as I move into this next slide, what that meant is we, we, we essentially took those cost centers that were, uh, originally part of the January seventh, uh, presentation and that work, and we divided them then into more appropriate locations based on, um, the discussions that we had. We, we had a lot of discussions about this. We, we, I mean, uh, John himself, uh, per, you know, we, we had a lot of discussion about should that position be here, should that position be there, should this function rely in, uh, district-wide services, should it lie in central office? So there is still work being done. This is not final, and we may, and we likely will, encounter other positions that we think, oh, that should be over here, over here. So this is still just a framework that we're trying now to follow as we finish our work, but there will continue to be some, uh, adjustments to this. So we took those cost centers that were developed as district-wide services and now divided them into two different, um, categories, both, again, the district-wide services. And here you'll see the new central office. I should remind you all that these are potential cost centers. We haven't landed on this. This will be something that will be fully implemented in our FY twenty-seven budget as we, again, focus more on central, uh, office, district-wide services, including special education, ML services, some of those very intricate components of our operation as we work to, uh, address how we budget for those, uh, services as well within our operation, more in FY twenty-seven. So here again is just a list. None of these cost centers are new on either one of these pages. They've just now been divided amongst those two different categories that we've developed. It's also important to notice that there will be some things, some, some services that cross multiple categories beyond just central office and district-wide services. I'll give you an example. In our, um, uh, student nutrition services, we have, uh, a maintenance individual who we, who we deem district-wide, be, district-wide services because he is supporting multiple, multiple facilities and the operations of, uh, SNS within those facilities. We, uh, categorize the individuals that work in the lunchrooms, the lunch, um, as we spoke about, the lunch ladies and lunch gentlemen who, uh, prepare and serve the food, right? They are what we are deeming fixed school staffing. The decision is made at the central office about how many should be in each position or in each building, and those positions are then allocated. And finally, we have then the leadership of the SNS team, which is central office. So you'll see, they do cross over, and we will try to minimize that as much as possible, but in some cases, it's, it's inescapable. So as we dig into the BBM implementation or balanced budget model implement, implementation, it really started in full force in February as, um, Cabinet Member Peterson and, uh, Mr. Johnson from that, uh, office, along with myself and principals, began to meet to develop their staffing plans for the next year. Afton Partners also assisted us in this effort in providing their leadership and their guidance in both helping to determine the process. They led, uh, team meetings, open office hours, things of that nature. So there was a, a vast, uh, support system put in place to help principals navigate this first year through this new process. As I mentioned, phase one, of course, uh, again, focused on the sites. Phase two will be, uh, more district-wide. We obviously believed it was important then, once that concluded, and that took about three weeks, once that work was done, that we received some feedback from our principals in how that process, uh, played out. Clearly being something new, it's important that we receive that feedback. We also know that it's important that we adapt and, and adjust to feedback. A couple of points, I won't read these, but a couple of, uh, points that jump off of this specifically for me, it's the, it's the need, um, for perhaps some additional content in our guidance document about the rules, what positions are available to be fu- uh, funded with certain, um, funding sources. We did what I believe to be enough, but I heard that that wasn't. There was more that we could do, and we certainly will. Another one is around, uh, just our general communications and sort of our, our, our schedule. Uh, we intend to, to back this entire process up pretty substantially, uh, for FY twenty-seven to align, um, collaboratively with the skip process. And so what that will allow the principals to have is more time. They'll have more time in preparing this, but because of, uh, the, the approval that was received in January, we then had to develop the internal tools and processes, which had started, of course, but we then had to get that working. Um, we, we heard that we needed to give principals more time, and rightly so. So those are some of the adjustments that we know we're going to be making as we look to the, the next phase of this work. Now, what did it yield? Um, as we mentioned, we've now, uh, created this fifth category, and here is what I would call our preliminary. We're fairly close in these numbers, um, but, uh, the FTE count is, uh, fluctuating, I would say, daily, sometimes a half, a one, up or down as, as positions are added and some are, are, are removed. And, and that doesn't mean people are added or removed, it means just job titles or assignments may be, uh, adjusted. So make it clear, it's not, it doesn't mean people necessarily. Um, the average cost, the way that we developed the, uh, process was where, was that principals would select those positions they wanted to fund through their flexible dollars using an average cost. Uh, we're now in the phase of our budget work where we're now applying actual, real salaries and, and ensuring that our averages are hopefully pretty close to what we, uh, what we actually will put in the budget. And so, uh, I'll get, probably, I'll talk more about that as we get into the actual budget work later on in, in January. But average cost was used just for the process of developing those work plans for the sites. It's important, um, then that we, we look at where these particular categories, uh, align in terms of the overall. And as you can see, between fixed school staffing and flexible school funding, that is about seventy-six, over seventy-six percent of the overall district staffing positions are put into, um, directly into supporting our students. Uh, that doesn't mean, again, that specialized, well, I should actually say specialized programs should be added to that as well, because that's going to be things such as C-Tech and P-Tech, so it's actually the combination of those three. It's really just the central office and district-wide services that one could, uh, perhaps make an argument that those are, are less involved on a day-to-day basis with students, not exclusively, but on a day-to-day basis. And that is right around twelve percent right now. These numbers are still being developed and finalized, and this will be part of the far, uh, final, uh, report that we do in June. Um, where we landed right now, uh, in terms of our revenue, this is slightly revised from where we were, um, in January when we presented the forecast. Uh, really, the only change is that we have some additional grant revenue that we're accounting for in our revenue. Unfortunately, this doesn't, uh, include any, uh, reductions as, uh, related to the, um, news that we received last week. Uh, and until we believe strongly, or until Dr. Pecel gives us the indication that that should be removed, it is still in here at this point. So none of those dollars have been removed from the revenue nor from the expenditure side of the budget at this particular time. So this is really just some additional state grant revenue that we, um, that we, um, missed in our first, um, go-around, and then some additional pension contribution aid that we received from the state that was missed as well. So at the, in the end, we are, uh, estimating our revenue right now to be about three hundred and two million dollars in the general fund. That's how much money we anticipate, uh, earning, uh, and, and therefore spending. And so as a balanced budget model, that is the goal. Should also be noted, this doesn't take into consideration any of the state potential modifications as a result of legislation. I will just tell you, there are some things that I think are likely to adjust, not getting into details because we don't know those numbers. into details because we don't know those numbers, but where the House plan and the Senate plans have some alignment, there may be some slight differences in their numbers. I am, in my mind, believing there will be some changes, but to what extent is unknown at this time, of course. We're monitoring that closely. This is the general fund FTE, and you can see that it's very close to where we approved the budget for this particular year. This is actually, as of today, we're at $2,397 point something, I believe, is the FTE. So again, reductions and, in some cases, I know there was at least two positions that we found in this list that were duplicates, so that's the work that we're doing now as we reconcile and put final dollars to it. On the expenditure side, again, we fully expect to recommend a balanced budget. One caveat of that might be some one-time expenditures that we deem appropriate that could be used from fund balance and those reserves, one of those being the Skyward replacement and upgrade. We are going through a process right now where we are evaluating other solutions, including Skyward itself, as that tool is that we're using today for both our business and our student management aspects of our operation, is over fifteen years old and has not had, has not been upgraded to its latest version. And so that is that work that we're doing. No decisions have been made on that, but we anticipate that being a project that we would undertake probably next year, and we aren't, we would be using, would be our recommendation, we use fund balance reserves to do that because it is a one-time, is it a one-time upgrade. I do want to note that the non-personnel did go up, and the reason that went up is because we are putting a few more things in here, and I don't know that this is exactly accurate either. As I dug into the non-personnel, I did notice that we had a large amount of activities and athletics budget in that, that would probably, a portion of that should be moved into salaries and benefits. So, but the non-personnel here does include everything we identified as part of our balanced budget work that we did with Afton, so all of our non-personnel expenses, including utility costs, including insurance and benef, not insurance and benefits, excuse me, liability insurance, transportation costs, supplies, materials, all of those non-people, that's what non-personnel is, including our contingency as well. Again, these, I would say, don't get too hung up on these dollar amounts at this particular point, because I do know that they're shifting, because I think there were some things, again, that were counted in non-personnel that should have been shifted up into employee salaries and benefits. But what I'm intending to show here is, again, a balanced budget. We expect our expenditures to equal what we bring in in revenue. Just a little bit more detail to our general fund expenditures as it relates to bringing in the balanced budget categories for our contracted employees. So that detail just is pulled over from an earlier slide. But then as we add our other expenditures, you'll see that there's an other employee pay. That includes expenditure for substitute teachers for some of our building leadership work, other pay to employees. It could include stipends for work that is perhaps paid for by a grant, but is still an expenditure to us on our books. That's what other employee pay. It's not tied to an employee's annual contract. Activities and athletics, I've mentioned that before, our non-personnel, so that non-personnel on the previous includes activities and athletics, so we just rolled those things together, and then, of course, our contingency. Just a little bit more detail again to arrive at the same bottom line, we hope, as we now begin that final, final part of our work. And just a reminder of what we're doing as we move forward, of course, we have tonight's work, but then we'll be back here on June 3rd with a prep for action where we anticipate bringing a lot more detail to you. Well, we will be bringing a lot more detail to you. We hope that at that particular time, the budget is fairly close, but we know as the legislation, as legislative session is wrapping up, hopefully just a little bit before that, or if it were to happen to perhaps go into extra session?
Special session.
Special session, excuse me. Couldn't think of the word there for a moment. If it goes into special session, we may have some additional work we need to do between the 30th and the 20th on that final budget. So we try to incorporate as much of what we know at the time of the approval of the final budget as we can. There may be some things that get missed that just have to be part of a revision later on. So that's what I have to share with you this evening. I will tell you that we're moving along pretty rapidly. Our staffing is almost wrapped up. We're now moving into the non-personnel and tightening up those dollars and ensuring we're, again, hopefully staying within budget. That's the goal.
Dr. Marvin.
This is, and you alluded to the uncertainty that we may be facing with state and federal funding, with the timeline that you have set up here and with our building leadership doing so much work in their building to ensure that they have the staff that their students need. And now with the rescission of the grant that we assumed and building principals assumed they had for this critical personnel for the next couple of years, does that change the timeline at all in terms of when the board, I mean, we're set to approve budgets on June 20th? You see that getting?
Well, it really can't. We have to have a budget when we start the new year, July 1st.
Yeah.
So as I mentioned, we, there may be some things that we just are, that are just still uncertain at the time that we approve the budget, and we have to go back and make a revision that will come to the board during the year. What you do today, we have, we've done two budget revisions already for this fiscal year, and we'll have another one upcoming. Those generally have been reserved for things that are unseen or unknown, in many cases, new grants or new revenue sources that come in after the budget is prepared. But there is the possibility there could be reductions that are not part of our final budget as a result of either legislation or the legislature or perhaps federal decisions that either are not certain enough to include or aren't known at the time that we would produce the final budget for you to approve. So, yeah, we're.
I guess my question is, will building leaders have the autonomy to change their minds and reallocate the funds that they have before or after June 20th if other cuts happen?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Marvin. The short answer is no, that the building leaders have built their budgets, and should we need to, in some utopian scenario, allocate more money, much more likely allocate less, we would be providing guidance centrally because we simply don't have the time to do the labor-intensive, school-by-school analysis, because as Mr. Krogstad just mentioned, we have to have a budget done by July 1st. And so we will be more directive, you know, I'm a big believer in school-level autonomy and decision-making, but when you have to turn around a revised budget in between the end of the legislative session and July 1st, we will likely need to be making those recommendations to you. We'll certainly take into consideration feedback we get from building leaders, but probably those will be some adjustments we'll make at the central level.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Whitehorn.
I could just not understand this as possible, but kind of to, to kind of just get a little bit more information as to what Dr. Marvin was saying. I know, I understand that we have to have it by July the 1st, and ultimately, we have some very uncertain things happening on higher-level government that we have no control over. But we are aware of what funding could be impacted, even though we don't know if it will be impacted. So is there any way, because I guess my small mind says that it's a lot easier to add than it is to subtract, is there any way to get a projection of what it would look like if it did, if it did all, you know, I mean, like, is it possible to make it so we're not doing as much work? Like you said, it's harder to, you know, they have to know what their staffing is. I guess my thought is that wouldn't it be a little better if we assume we may not have certain funds, you know, and then if we have it, great, we can increase, as opposed to having to go backwards and say, we thought we were going to have it, we were praying that we were going to get it, you know, it didn't happen, and now we have to, you know, go backwards? Or is that just not a realistic way to budget? Am I making any sense here?
Yeah, no, it's a, I think it's a great point, Dr. Whitehorn, that we are budgeting conservatively, and so we are not hopeful of a windfall, and so I think essentially we're doing what you're suggesting. That's why I say this utopian scenario in which we get more is unlikely, and we're not really planning on that. Now, the thing that's so hard, in state law, the legislature has to finish by the 19th or 22nd.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth. So we should have enough time to bring you a budget that reflects that. The big question is if they actually are at an impasse and they have to go to a special session, in which case all bets are off, and we're in the uncharted territory of exactly how we might do that. But we are planning to be, you know, conservative for where we'll go. The thing that is so uncertain about a divided house and then a governor, you know, who is a third player, is sometimes these decisions are made at 2:00 AM in a meeting room where none of us are there, and they, the next morning, they do what we call the runs, where they do the analysis that figure out what happened to our dollars in achievement integration aid or compensatory aid or the general fund, and it's a done deal by that point. I think everyone who is at the policy level knows that's not how you're supposed to run a railroad, but it does seem that we're headed for that right now. So I'm hoping that there are some very thoughtful, behind closed doors discussions happening right now, so that we do, the legislature does end on time on May 19th, but we will need to be ready to pivot for that.
Dr. McLaughlin.
I just want to comment, Mr. Krogstad, that as a member of the community budget committee, community budget advisory committee, I just appreciate the clarity of this, and I think back to a year ago, how different this was and how much progress we've made in these revisions that, it seems like every time I see it, it's revised and improved and more transparent and more clear for everyone who's looking at it. So I see it as a really good resource, and in particular, I think it puts a lot of context to it to see, even though they're potential cost centers, but to see what you mean when you say district-wide services. From outside your work, I had no idea what you meant until I see this, but I think that's super helpful for us to understand what we're talking about more clearly, but also seeing this as a resource. If we get questions from the community, what does that mean? This is a really good guide for what it means. And I just appreciate the progress and the investment in that change and the value that this provides to the district in us feeling confident that we understand what we're making the decisions about, particularly when this is, the balanced budget model is so different from what we've done before, that I think this is really good information for us to have available to us if we need it. Thank you.
And in the past, Mr. Carlson knows how fond I am of our budget book, but one of my favorite charts are the FTEs by a job title. So when we do the budget book this year, can we get it by the categories in the balanced budget model?
Yes, so that would be an added table that would then divide it exactly like that, like, sort of like we've done here, but not, we haven't done it by position type yet, obviously.
That's wonderful, thank you. And then sort of tied to that is, you talked about how you divided up the, what was district-wide and now into district-wide and central. Did you make any moves with fixed, fixed school staffing or flexible out of those categories?
No, nothing, those first three categories did not change. We did, I will tell you that within the specialized programs, we actually added a few positions that would have been in district-wide other. So essentially, if it's a specialized program, CTEC, PTEC, all of the positions within that program, or all of the positions are identified as specialized program regardless of whether it's a teacher, a maintenance person, SNS, whatever it might be. So those get kind of carved out in their own, but no changes were made at all to flexible or fixed as any of the work that we've done.
Anything else, board members? All right, well, we look forward to getting the runs. Thank you.
Our next agenda item is a prep for action, approval of the 2026-2027 calendar. The board is scheduled to take action at the May 20th meeting. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you so much, and I want to just say, so that Mr. Bakken, who's coming up, does not feel singled out, we just had a little snafu with no timer set last time, so Carl, this is not being set because you need a timer and they don't. But, you know, when the timer's not on, I know I'm having an aneurysm over here, and so this is not personal, but thank you, Ms. Kramer. Mr. Bakken has been our calendar guru every year, even though it's not strictly a human resource function, so I'm always glad for him taking on, taking it on. I also want to thank our Rochester Education Association and Rochester Principals Association who have, as in the past, helped us develop this proposal for your consideration. Carl.
Good evening, board members. I'm here to present the 26-27, it's hard to believe we're talking those years right now, school calendar for your review. It does, we're hearing loud and clear that it benefits many of our families to have this completed early to allow for families to plan for vacation and other family events. I think we did it last year over the summer, so we're a little bit ahead of that this year. The proposed 26-27 calendar in front of you is very similar to recent calendars that we've proposed and have run. It has been typical the last several years for the school to start the last week of August and finish in the first week of June, give or take a couple of days. The background information highlights the back-to-school week, the first student day is the last student day, professional development as well as curriculum adjustment days. Those are laid out there, and are, we have 173 student contact days, and that's been the norm for the past several years, and as per the contract, there are 192 teacher contract days for holidays, two unpaid days during MEA break, and four flexible conference days when teachers are not required to work because of the conference time they're putting in after school hours. With that, I'll take any questions you have.
I know that in listening to the state legislature, the issue of Labor Day being so late in future years has come up, but we continue to be able to take advantage of our construction exemption to be able to start before Labor Day, and that is not the case for other districts.
Correct. Because of the size of the district, we easily meet that minimum dollar amount of construction each year without, probably even without a big project going on.
Anything else, board members? All right, and this will come back.
Oh, sorry, I did just want to note one thing, maybe especially because we're on the eve of a curriculum adjustment day tomorrow, that every time that we talk about literacy and implementing new curriculum, I hear from our professionals that those days are critical to implementing our literacy strategy and really valuable for what we're trying to do to make Rochester public school is the best place to learn how to read. So I'm glad that we're continuing to do that. I recognize that it's important, and we'll enjoy having the kids at home tomorrow. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
And our next item is another prep for action item, mindsets, behaviors, and experiences for student success, and the board previously discussed this at our last study session and is scheduled to take action at the May 20th meeting. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you. As you all can see, we have Will Ruffin II, our executive director of recruiting engagement, and Heather Hogan, who directs our school counseling and post-secondary readiness work, and Alex Agano, our lead counselor, joining us here. As board members are aware, the idea of these mindsets, behaviors, and what we're now calling steps, previously known as experiences for success, is to articulate those competencies that we want kids to develop over time, both within and beyond the curriculum. We don't know all the ways that, over the course of our next strategic plan, we will use this framework if you improve it, if you approve it, and maybe improve it. Teachers will integrate it into their instruction. Chief Academic Officer Mona Perkins and her team will use it as we are selecting and updating curriculum. Our school counselors will use it as they are both conducting lessons and interacting individually. Our social workers will use it for the kind of mental health work we talked about. We want to make this an explicit set of mindsets and behaviors and steps to success after high school that we can integrate into our work. And so we're asking you at this meeting and then for full approval at the next meeting to put your seal of approval on it so that we can then begin what will, I think, be the very organic work of bringing this to life in our schools. So with that, I'll turn it over to the team for an update on what's changed since you saw the last draft of this proposal.
Thank you, Dr. Pecel, and school board members for having us back to the table tonight to give you this update. Like Dr. Pecel said, we have Alex Agano here with us presenting instead of Heather Wilmann, and Alex is our lead counselor for the district. So jumping right in to have a little context to this conversation So jumping right in to have a little context to this conversation tonight, remember this was born from the listening sessions of our strategic plan, where it was loud and clear that the community wanted our students to have a plan for life after they graduated high school. We also have the famous building blocks, Lego blocks here, where you can see building post-secondary education and career pathways was always a part of the plan. We want our students to have a vision for life after high school like we explained, but there's also a point where we want them to have the steps to realize those plans, also part of the overall big picture. So before you, we have a proposal for school board resolution. And this is for anyone listening or may be new to the conversation to understand what we're asking of the board tonight. We're asking that the board adopt two frameworks going forward. The first framework is the mindsets and behaviors for student success, like we mentioned back in March when we presented. And the second framework is actually 67 steps to success. So thank you, Director McLaughlin, for catching.
Because I'm so good at math.
Oh, my gosh, that was my fault, but I was a social studies teacher, so I can't count.
So adopting those two frameworks is what we're asking for. And I suggest you keep that in mind as we go through the updates for today.
So as part of our work refining the two frameworks, we received a lot of really good, really good and important feedback. And here you can see that we've provided you just a summary of what our school community saw as strength in those frameworks. And just to highlight, just briefly, a couple, you know, one of the things that was appreciated, for example, was that the frameworks focused on strengths and skills needed for outside of the classroom, outside of academics as well. For example, social, emotional, and life skills, as well as other real-world skills to support a balanced and, you know, whole-child approach, as you can see, like in the floor. So we just wanted to highlight a couple of brief strengths that our community saw.
The next, next piece of feedback is regarding questions or concerns that people had as they looked through the proposal. And some people still felt that it was still college-heavy, and they felt like the college path was still the default path. And then other paths, such as the trades, or military, or people going directly to work, was still underrepresented. Something else that stood out was, if you look at number two, the implementation piece, was do we have the human capacity to actually pull this off? I just want to remind people that this was the draft of the proposal. This was not the implementation plan, which would, which would be the next part of the phase. And then number seven, I just want to point out too, that there was a request for more experiential learning, so such as internships, job shadowing, and volunteer work.
Maybe, could you hit the advanced, maybe, just, maybe our clicker is dying? Probably just hit the screen.
One of the pieces of feedback that we asked for was how our community, which included students, staff, community members, key partners, how they saw this, both frameworks being used. And so you can see some of the suggested uses or ways that, that, that feedback came back. And many of them were items that Dr. Pecow mentioned as far as how we, as an organization, will be able to use them. But it was also, a key piece of feedback was for the family component and a request for either toolkit or set of resources for families to be able to help support students as they move through our system. The couple of big takeaways. So big takeaways for feedback are overall very positive, but with an emphasis on needing a really strong implementation plan. Balance between that college readiness and alternative pathways, and really making it feel relevant for students. So we really heard that multiple pathways piece of feedback. We heard that the last time we were here at the board. We've heard that from students, from staff, and from community members. So we did address that in our revision. Our presentation last time really focused on documents. And tonight, we want to show you a glimpse of the support for multiple pathways within our post-secondary readiness curriculum. We want to make sure that all students have, have information to make decisions about what is best for them, and then also help them understand that their path may, their idea about their path may change over the years as they go through school. So Alex is going to share a little bit of information about how we support multiple pathways.
So as you can see on the screen, and as Heather said, we do support multiple inclusive pathways within our curriculum in order to really open as many doors as possible. And to that end, we intentionally teach about these nine different pathways that you can see supported training or living after school, apprenticeship, military, directly-to-work, entrepreneurship, in addition to the gap here, down the bottom six there, and then the top three, the two-year college, four-year college, and the first, the application training. And so in addition to intentionally teaching about each of those, there are some pathway-specific steps that a student might need to take to achieve a certain goal, to achieve their goals. And just one of those, I'll just mention briefly, is, for example, to, you know, enlist in the military, you have to go to the military entrance processing site and then, you know, obviously show up to basic training. And so that would be an example of a pathway-specific step. Or, for example, if you start your own business, registering with appropriate authorities for your, for your business plan is providing, is the most pathway-specific. And as you can see from the examples there, we do this intentional education at multiple points in a student's K-12 experience, where we provide that information, both giving them information, but also asking them to self-reflect, so that they and their caregivers can, you know, have all the information, both kind of about what the options are, as well as their own self-reflection to make the best choice that fits for them, no matter what their pathway is.
So based on all of the feedback that we received, we did do a number of revisions. One of the major revisions that we did was that we sport them into two frameworks, the RPS mindsets and behaviors, and then the RPS steps to student success after high school. Feedback we received was that having the two together was overloaded information, overwhelmed, overwhelmed, and it was much easier for them to digest if we had it separated into two. We clarified some of the language in the mindsets and behaviors, so that it was more action-oriented. And we did preview this with our student school board. And at that time, I know there was a question from the board about the language and whether or not it was accessible for students. Our student school board did not share that they had concerns in that area. But the other piece that goes along with that is using those mindsets and behaviors as teaching tools and making sure that all of our students do understand the language that is being used in that. And then with our experiences, we did adjust the language to be more inclusive of multiple pathways, adjusted language for flexibility for students. There was some concerns about young students getting locked into a major or a pathway, so we made sure that it shows students are reviewing their plan as they go through their years, and they're not locked in at an early age. And then we're also organizing it, so it's clear which are college-specific and which are universal steps, because we want to make sure that students understand and families understand that it is not gearing all students towards college, but they have the flexibility to make a choice that's best for them. For example, 11th grade has 16 steps, and only five of those are specific to college.
Wow. I think that may have been the most precise presentation ever. Oh, yeah. Board members, any questions? Director McLaughlin?
I have a couple. Ms. Hogan, we talked a little bit at the, I'm forgetting the whole title, the Community Curriculum Advisory, the, I can't remember the I. You can help me with that. That there was some feedback in those groups about making this accessible for students and parents who perhaps receive special education services, IEPs, those kinds of things. And then it also dawned on me that I'm curious to make sure that this is going to be used in a similar way at the middle school Alternative Learning Center and the Secondary Alternative Learning Center, just to make sure all of our students have access to this wonderful information.
Yes, and Heather Wilmun, myself, and Nicole Mewer are collaborating on that exact thing. And we have that as a summer project. Alex will be involved in that as well, so that we can make sure that we have resources available for families, for students who receive special education services. And our Alternative Learning Centers are also involved in implementing this as well.
Wonderful, thank you.
Director Marvin?
Well, quickly, you know, I really appreciate that you continue to revise and review and engage other people to, to look at the work you're doing and really listen to what they're saying. I was really impressed when you brought this to the high school student school board members, and they said 66 steps, and are there 67?
Yes.
Where's the 67?
There's no number here. I pointed it out.
Oh, I know it was you, oh. Okay, thank you. So do the math.
It's like 4A and 4B, it makes 67.
Anyway, they looked at it and said, man, this is way too long, and it's way too much. And then after they looked at it, they said, this makes absolute sense. And it's, it was, I, I think what they really liked was the specificity. Starting in kindergarten, you're going to start talking about different careers. So kids get that idea from the, you know, the first year that they're in school. When, but they said, after looking at it, it made sense, and it wasn't too much, and it was easy to understand. Then in meeting with some middle school kids too, and we talked about this a little bit, but they said they would really like for high school students to come and talk with them. They're, they're all about having high school panels or individuals help them learn or help them, you know, with, with their questions, especially as they think about how they want to get through high school in order to be ready to do the thing that they're passionate about. So I, I know there are a lot of details to be worked out still, but I think this is really hopeful, really smart. And as I think I said before, the thing I like the most about this is that every single student will have multiple opportunities to see themselves doing something meaningful after high school. Nobody is going to feel like, I don't belong, or there's no path forward to me. And I think that's just critically important.
Director White, one?
I just have a comment, I guess, per se. So after seeing Dr. Harris, something he did say was, was very interesting to me in all of his presentations, that he decided to be an astronaut in 7th grade. And what he experienced was not the type of feedback you would think you would get, right? Because you want to be an astronaut, you want to go to NASA. And he said, opposed to getting support, a lot of people also often told him how hard it was, how many barriers there would be. So, and I, I guess I'm saying this to maybe counter-say what we said before, but not really, but kind of a little bit. Well, because we, you know, there's this, there's this thing of not locking a kid in, right? So this kid is eight and they're going to be an astronaut. Give them the tools they need to be an astronaut, right? I mean, I, I get the point, and, and people grow through. But something he mentioned is so many people don't live their dream, because as they get older, they're told that this is too big to accomplish, and this takes this many steps. So a lot of times, it's not because the kid doesn't want to be an astronaut anymore. As they get older, they've just been given more. What word am I looking for?
Discouragement.
Yeah, discouragement. It's been dumbed down. It, it starts to look unattainable, you know? And he talked about how he, because he's an older gentleman, how he had to write a letter to NASA and get back what he needed, and how he got very little support on all the checklists. I didn't even know you had to be like a doctor. I mean, you got to do a lot to be an astronaut. You just can't sign up like an application. I would never be eligible. You got to be a certain height, I mean, it's crazy stuff. But, um, but I just say that because I would hope that there is some, you know, I know that kids change, but I wouldn't want kids just completely giving up, you know, on a dream, because as they begin to look into it, it begins to look unattainable. So like, to one of the concerns that mental health support, and I know it's a hot topic right now, but I just hope that there is some support and encouragement that if you, because a lot of people end up going back to their original dreams at some point, right? Either in retirement or whatever, they finally want to be, you know, an actor, you know, they, and they just do it. So I just hope that there is a, a component of this plan that doesn't discourage the dreams, right? So even though it may seem, you know, I want to be this Hollywood actress, I think there should be some, and I don't know, it's probably written in there somewhere. But that's the comment I wanted to make, because that was very powerful, that they are accomplishable, you know, even, even things that seem very far out. So I would hope that we keep a little of that in mind. So lock them in, but not lock them in. But, you know, it's good to be reminded of you.
I don't, I know, I know this is probably an implementation piece, but maybe also a setting expectations on the part of the board when we look at how well we're doing with all these. Does Zello or some other piece let us know how, how the kids are progressing through these 67 steps? So we know, are we, like, are we missing one consistently? Is it really hard to get them to, to finish this? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, Zello does allow for us to track that. And actually, Alex and I were on call today with them. And an update that we'll have for next year is, we'll be able to have all 67 steps in Zello, and we can track how we are doing with those. Many of them are already embedded in the curriculum. What is going to be a customizable component of it, where we can add new ones that are not.
And what about the mindsets and the behaviors? How do you anticipate someone knowing, a student, for example, knowing that they've, they've kind of worked their way through those?
Well, I think that self-reflection piece will be a big component of that. But I think broader, that really is going to come in our implementation piece and working with the different departments that are willing to support this work. That will be a key part of that.
Director Barlow?
And so it's great to set an expectation. And so I'm curious, though, we're probably, are you envisioning implementation? One could be anticipate potentially seeing results, not just in terms of, are the students meeting 67 steps? But are you anticipating when you'd be able to provide back to the board a assessment of how well, and I know it's part of the plan, and maybe it isn't fair to ask you when it's part of a larger plan. But I'm, bottom line, I'm, I'm excited to anticipate the, the results. I have currently seven grandchildren, which are part of RPS. And, and probably less about your presentation, I will see evidence in their lives. So I'll, I'll, I'm looking forward to that.
Sure. Thank you, Director Barlow. I think I probably should take a crack at that briefly. As you know, the performance measures that you are about to vote on in the, or that you will be, yeah, it's vote, it's action today, be voting on for the school improvement process include enrollment in post-secondary education, career in technical, four-year, within 16 months after high school. So that is really the North Star measure. And we also have in our new system, that you'll be voting on shortly, progress indicators. A powerful progress indicator of progress toward that goal will be what Heather and Alex were just talking about in response to Chair Nathan's question, the percentage of kids who are completing these steps. And so, and we'll have And so, and we'll have Dr. Rock looking at statistical correlations between which steps are most predictive of getting into that I enrolled. So that measurement strategy, I think parts of it will be in place, parts of it will be forthcoming. I think in terms of the implementation strategy of how we're actually going to increase kids readiness to realize their dreams after high school, I have no doubt that will be at the heart of our next strategic plan. And that will really be a guiding theme of everything that we do, which we will begin development of in the fall.
And I think this is another implementation piece, but I think about it because I know you had a Zello webinar, video, Zoom call where parents could learn about Zello. And I know one of the things that I've appreciated about us implementing Zello is that it does give that link to parents to be able to link to the students' progress. Is there, and are we going to have any way to measure how well our parents are accessing or using Zello to support their students?
Yeah, we do currently have invitations, you know, out to families and a family engagement strategy that allows them to click in and see all their students' activities and data. And then we can see their engagement and the numbers there as well.
Great. Because I think that speaks to what Director Whitehorn said about, you know, kind of breaking down those barriers. The more support we can give our students in achieving their dreams, the better.
I think if I'm, I know we're trying to move on, Chair Nathan, I'll just say, while I agree Zello is a great tool, I actually hope that what you are being asked to consider tonight and then vote on replaces the term using Zello. Because Zello is a software platform. And so if you are a teacher out there with 150 kids and you have all of these things and someone says, are you integrating Zello into your lessons? It's really a means, as opposed to are you developing the mindsets, the behaviors, the steps? Zello becomes a tool for the framework here. Because if we're really going to take it to the next level, right now, Zello has kind of caught on and people keep referring to it as Zello, partly because it's such a weird name. I actually kind of tense up a little every time because I know this work will not become transformative if we see it as a software platform. Because some of the most powerful work that I know, for instance, Alex and his counselors, colleagues of school counselors are doing is also conversational. It's leading a lesson in the class. It's not necessarily Zello. So yes, but I'm hoping a year from now, we'll talk about the mindsets, behaviors, and steps. And Zello is one way we're doing it to get there.
Great, yes.
And I appreciate that, but I also look at it from the parent perspective. Like, I look at it like we're building a house by building a kid. And if we don't have a tool like that, we need that tool in order to get started and to help with the framework so that families and students know how to get on the path of, they want to choose the path and get on the path they want to be on, is part of building the house.
Well, thank you for your work and continued revision, and next time it's a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last prep for action item are the policy committee recommendations from the April 30th Policy Committee meeting. These are the recommendations that the policy committee has proposed to the board. And this is the first of two prep for action briefings before the policies will be on the consent agenda on June 3rd. Director Workman, do you want to begin the review of the policies and procedures?
Or I could.
Or Director Marvin, sorry.
Director Marvin will.
Thank you. Policy 560, previously called homeless highly mobile students, is meant to, is used to ensure that children and youth who are experiencing homelessness, receive the same educational opportunities as other students who are not homeless. And also to ensure that the district is in compliance with McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act and applicable Minnesota law. The only change to this, and this is an RPS-only policy, is that we are renaming it Students Experiencing Homelessness. Policy 701, Establishment and Adoption of the School District Budget. This policy establishes lines of authority and procedures for the establishment of the school district's revenue and expenditure budgets. There are some MSBA policy, model policy changes. And then 701.01, which is modification of school district budget, which includes the procedures for modifying a school district's adopted revenue and expenditure budgets. Because we're on a three-year cycle, we reviewed this, but recommended no change.
Policy 701.1R is an RPS-only policy, so there were no changes from MSBA on this. Changes were suggested by Rochester Public Schools to address staff titles. The purpose of policy 701.1R, purchases of goods and services, is to ensure quality, consistency, and fiscal responsibility in the purchases of goods and services for the school district in accordance with Minnesota statutes. Then there is a procedure that's attached to 70, that's to this policy, that's 701.1RA. There was no change to the flow chart, flow chart, but the manuals were updated to reflect policy and current RPS practice. Policy 704 is the Development and Maintenance of an Inventory of Fixed Assets and a Fixed Asset Accounting System. The changes in this draft reflect changes in MSBA model policy. And this policy provides for the development and maintenance of an inventory of the fixed assets of the school district and the establishment and maintenance of a fixed asset accounting system. Procedure 704A is the procedure that goes along with this policy. There were changes made to reflect dollar values that RPS wanted to use as updates. And there were also changes to RPS staff titles. And this outlines the process for maintaining the inventory of fixed assets and technology equipment of the school district. Policy 721 is the Uniform Grant Guidance Policy Regarding Federal Revenue Sources. And this had changes from MSBA model policy. And the purpose is to ensure compliance with the requirements of the federal Uniform Grant Guidance Regulations by establishing uniform administrative requirements, cost principles, and audit requirements for federal grant awards.
Oh, we're. 805, sorry. I was hung up on the UG thing. Different story. This is the Waste Reduction and Recycling Policy, which establishes a resource recovery program to promote the reduction of waste, the separation and recovery of recyclable and reusable commodities, procurement of recyclable commodities and commodities containing recycled materials, the disposition of waste materials and surplus property, and the establishment of a program of education to develop an awareness of environmentally sound waste management. There are corrections to match the MSBA model policy. For Matt.
Policy 821.1R, Naming of Sites, Facilities, and Rooms is a new RPS-only policy to address how to name district sites, facilities, or locations within district facilities. So the purpose of this policy is to provide the guidelines for the naming of new or existing school district facilities. And its companion is Procedure 821.1RA, which simply accompanies that policy. Policy 905 is Advertising and Sponsorships. And the purpose of this policy is to provide guidelines for the advertising or promoting of products or services. There were no MSBA model policy changes, but we, there were some changes just for clarification and alignment with the current MSBA model policy. And then Procedure 905A is a procedure that accompanies 905, updated to clarify the use of funds and formatting of the form that is available in this procedure. Board members, any questions on this set of financial and administrative policies? All right, we'll revisit this at the next meeting. Our next item is an action item, School Resource Officers Contract. I'll read the resolution and then we can move to discussion. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the School Resource Officer Services Agreement from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027, at a total cost of $1,148,430.
Second.
That was, that was a motion?
Oh, move approval.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the resolution has been approved. Our next action item is Performance Measures and the Skip 2.0 Process. Again, I'll read the resolution. I believe the superintendent has some information and then we can have some discussion. Be it resolved that the RPS School Board directs the superintendent to adopt a new continuous improvement process that will guide the work of all RPS schools starting with the 2026-27 school year, that includes the elements listed in the document entitled Superintendent's Recommendation for Skip 2.0 Revised on Tuesday, April 29th, 2025.
Move approval.
It has been moved and seconded. Superintendent, pick up.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I'll be very brief. I want to thank the board for the very, very substantive feedback that you gave on this proposal during our last meeting. It has significantly strengthened it and I have put bullets on that highlight the point. I want to just highlight in particular, since I know the discussion about parents and caregivers and their involvement in skip has been a subject of comments to the board and discussion, a couple of particular changes, though there are others. A timeline for seeking feedback from parents and caregivers on the skip has been added to ensure that parents and caregivers have an authentic opportunity to learn about and influence the skip before it is approved by the skip team. The revised recommendation also requires that I approve each school's plan for authentic parent and caregiver engagement in their school skip prior to the development of the skip that year. So two of a number of ways to try and enhance that parent and caregiver, caregiver involvement. And as I've said repeatedly, I will be encouraging schools to also add parents and caregivers to their skip teams. But I am not at the point yet where I think we should require that. And so that is not included there, though I could envision us, once we have some experience with that, potentially moving in a different direction in that area in the future. But I really thank the board for putting some teeth behind the parent and caregiver aspects of skip development that was not reflected in the last draft.
Board members, any questions, comments, reflections? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the resolution has been approved. Our next action item is approval of start times for 2025-26. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the start and end times for the 2025-2026 school year as follows. Bamber Valley, Churchill, Elton Hills, Falwell, Gibbs, Hoover, Jefferson, Overland, and Sunset Terrace Elementary Schools, 7:55 a.m. to 2:15 p.m. Bishop, Franklin, Gage, Lincoln, Longfellow, Pinewood, Riverside Central, and Washington Elementary Schools, 7:55 a.m. to 2:10 p.m. Dakota, John Adams, Kellogg, and Willow Creek Middle Schools, 8:35 a.m. to 3:15 p.m. Century, John Marshall, and Mayo High Schools, 8:50 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Phoenix Academy, Rochester Academy for Independent Living and Middle School Alternative Learning Center, 8:20 a.m. to 2:20 p.m. High School Alternative Learning Center, 8:50 a.m. to 3:05 p.m. Preschool Morning Programs, 8:15 a.m. to 10:45 a.m. And Preschool Afternoon Programs, 12:15 p.m. to 2:45 p.m. Move approval. Second. It has been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments, or additional information needed? Director Marvin.
Quick question for the Alternative Learning Center, 8:20 to 2:20. How about the evening classes?
That's the middle school one, the one you just read.
Oh.
But it's still the same question. Are you talking about night school?
Yeah, we anticipate no change in the night school time.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I should just very briefly say, Madam Chair, that as you know, there was a proposal for somewhat more extensive change that I shared with you last time. We are not recommending that because we got some feedback that it was, there were some issues with it. So I think that we are essentially sticking with the status quo.
Director Workman. Yeah, I'd just like to express my appreciation to the superintendent and the board that when information that is received that improves on what we've already had a discussion about, we jump right into it. So it's not a question of flip-flopping on anything but saying, hey, that was a great idea, something we didn't consider, let's add it. So thank you to my colleagues on the board and the superintendent. Director McLaughlin.
I kind of play the devil's advocate sometimes in my thinking, though, is that it seemed like some of the impetus for the earlier recommended change was things about transportation. Do we think we're going to be able to accomplish this without having to change it again?
Well, invite John to comment there. The short answer is yes. And just to be really clear about why we had that change, Director McLaughlin, we got worried about some contract hours for teachers in certain schools, student contact hours tied to the contract. There are some schools where kids eat in lunchrooms because they don't have access in the morning, for instance. And so we decided to just be really safe on that issue. And there were a couple others. But we do think the transportation system is going to work with this time as well.
Yeah, by and large, it's going to work. It works really well when the weather is nice, like right now. It can get backed up a couple minutes extra, as I talked about last time, on those winter days and high-traffic days and construction days. And so, you know, that was part of the recommendation. But we think overall, the majority of days are going to run on time.
All right, hearing no other comments, all those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the resolution has been approved. Item 9.1 is our updated ABCD. And the current version of the whole year of ABCD is available in the agenda item. And upcoming agenda items are being displayed on the slide. At our May 13th study session, we'll have a focus topic on enrollment projection. At our May 20th regular meeting, we will have a monitoring item, which is our annual presentation from Project Search. We will have action items on the school calendar proposal, proposal of the sale and issuance of general obligation facilities maintenance bonds, and sale and issuance of full-term certificates of participation series. You'll remember that from a few weeks ago, we had a presentation that those were going to be going for sale. And we'll do the action item on mindsets, behaviors, and experiences for student success. And just a reminder, these are all draft agenda items and agenda items can be added up through the meeting time. Any agenda items board members would like to raise for consideration at a future meeting agenda? Hearing none. We have studies, all upcoming meetings start at 5:30. Our study session on May 13th, a regular meeting on May 20th, a regular meeting on June 3rd, and a study session on June 10th. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:36 p.m.